I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 1st, 2016 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tara Penny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Donna from the United, First United Methodist Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. I come this evening thanking you for each elective official that occupies a seat on this council and other officials and staff that make up our city government. God, according to Romans 13 of the Christian scriptures, we know there is no authority except from you, and those that exist have been instituted by you. I pray today that the members of this council will continually understand and embrace this truth, that ultimately it was not the will of the people that placed them in these positions of power, but it was due to your divine prerogative. May they have an acute awareness that all their deliberations in heart and on record and their decisions are ever before you to whom they must give an account. May they therefore seek to carry out this sacred trust with all integrity, veracity, and equality. Grant them the wisdom they need to handle the affairs of this city in a way that promotes peace and prosperity for all its citizens. And lastly, grace them with a personal discipline to remain qualified for office during their terms of office. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) America and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our commission meeting, and I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to start with a special presentation on the summer intern program. Madam City Clerk.
Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners, tonight we would like to introduce you to our 2016 Summer Interns. This paid internship program was initiated by Vice Mayor Tara Penny in the summer of 2014 and approved by the Board. This program has not only benefited the students, but the city as well. After introducing the interns, we will be watching a short video produced by Anthony Sino, who is the IT intern. This video will describe the interns' duties and what they've learned from this experience. If the interns could stand as I call your name, I believe we have one gentleman with us this evening. We have Anthony Sino from interned in the IT department, Yana Decoder in the Fire Department, Kevin Morales in the Fire Department, George Fackless in the Building Department, Savan Floyd, Cops and Kids, Alexandra Hera Lambis in the Police Department, Ariel Vega, Library, Kristen Clark, Culture and Civic Services, and Simone Allen from the Recreation.
Hey, everyone. My name is Anthony and I'm an IT Department intern. Working in IT was an amazing experience, and I learned a lot. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city manager, the department heads, and the board of commissioners for this opportunity, and I hope you guys enjoy the rest of the video.
My name is Alexandra Hera Lambis, and I work at the Tarpon Springs Police Department. At the Police Department, I would answer phone calls, file police reports, and get to go on line and walk through all the cops. When I was working at the police station, I learned to always work with accountability, professionalism, integrity, creativity, and quality. Thank you to the mayor, the city manager, and the heads of all the departments for giving me this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Kevin Morales. I'm with the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue on a day-to-day basis. I file paperwork, and on other days I get to ride along with the firefighters to get a feel of both the administrative side and the on-duty side as well. And some things that I've learned is to communicate well with others. The most important thing I learned is to talk to a lot of people, get to know a lot of people, and to always keep a smile on your face and respect others. And I would also like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and the board of commissioners, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yana Decoder, and I've been working with the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue. On a daily basis, I answer phone calls, do filing, and go on dispatches. One of the coolest things I've learned is the medical protocol for trauma patients, and I would like to thank the mayor, the city manager, the board of commissions, and the department heads for this opportunity.
My name is George Fackless, and I work for the Development Services Department. I packageded building permits and went on building inspections throughout the City of Tarpon Springs. I learned that the city's priority is its citizens and making them happy. I would like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and the heads of departments for this opportunity. Thank you.
My name is Kristen Clark, and I work for the Department of Culture and Civic Services. I've done is I've worked for the city's database. I've also spread out through files. The most important thing I've learned about is having the hands to apply my social skills so that I can be something taken down the road. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and the heads of the departments for making this happen.
Hi, I'm Stevieon Floyd, and I'm working at Cops and Kids Youth Center for the summer. What I do on a day-to-day basis was pretty much working with children, helping them with their activities, going on field trips. The most important thing working here at Cops and Kids Youth Center would have to be me transitioning to be more of an adult, because here the kids really look at me as an adult, which I really hasn't really accepted yet myself. So working here really helped me become more mature. I also want to thank the board, city manager, the mayor, and the department.
Hi, my name is Simone Allen. I work with the Recreation Department for Tarpon Springs. The most important thing I've learned is how to be reliable, dependable, people skills, being enthusiastic. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and the heads of all departments for this opportunity.
My name is Ariel La Vega, and I work at the Tarpon Springs Library. On a daily basis, I work with young children and assist in the transfer of books in and out of the library. The most important thing that I've learned is organization and social skills. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city manager, the boards, and the commissioners.
Great. (Applause) I'd like to congratulate all the students, and I want to thank them for being part of this great program. With this program, they were able to get a lot of hands-on skills and also some real-life experience, which can be very beneficial to their careers. Again, thank you for being part of it. Vice Mayor Tara Penny?
Thank you.
Thank you for initiating the program.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate the recognition from the city clerk, but it was made possible with the collaboration of this board and ultimately the city manager's support on the project. But, you know, it was just a small initiative and thinking about, you know, our youth within the community and things that they can do and how we, as a city, can embrace them and create more buy-in within the community and create more involvement with the students. So I'm glad that it's come to fruition. I'm glad that we've had a couple of years of a successful program. And really, it came to mind, thinking about, you know, the youth of the community and as they go to the next level in terms of their college education, it was really something that I thought would benefit them in terms of, you know, putting something on their college application that said, "Look, I come from Tarpon Springs, and I've already given back to Tarpon Springs, and I've learned about Tarpon Springs." And here you can see it right here in this, you know, in my application that I've given back, and that I was actually paid for my time as well. So I'm appreciative to everyone who's gotten involved and really taken advantage of the program, and I think that it's been a success. And I feel like we've had more applications come in in recent years than we've actually had positioned. So we may want to look at trying to, you know, extend it and increase our budget just a little bit more to include more kids. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, everything you said, obviously, I agree with, and thank you for initiating this program. I see you all as future leaders, and I'm very proud of what you've been doing. And thank you for being here, Mr. Fackless. But yes, this is a great program, and I like the young man saying he wasn't sure that he was an adult yet, yet he had to play that role in the Cops and Kids program. So it is a way to grow up and go on to the next step, and thank you for what you've done. Thank you.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I think this is an amazing program. I want to thank the vice mayor for having this idea, and I'm in full support of if we have the funds to expand the budget. If we're definitely getting more interest, then we have spots. I think as it is something that we do for our youth, we should expand that and make sure that we are as well covering all areas of city government. And if somebody needs more than one, then I think that would be great as well. I know, because I'm kind of a nerd, if I was young and they had this program, I would have wanted to do it myself. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. I want to first thank all the students that came out and applied and got a taste of what it's like in the real world, in the real workforce. Not always fun, but at least you got, you know, I appreciate all your efforts and wanting to learn more about the workforce. And I do want to thank Vice Mayor Tara Penny for his initiative here. I think it's a great idea. And, you know, can we have more departments? I'm sure there's some more departments that need help as well, other than the summertime, possibly. So yeah, if we put it, you know, we look at budget and see what we can expand, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? If you do have, please come forward. And, okay. Yes, of course.
I haven't even told the vice mayor yet. I thought I'd surprise him tonight in front of the audience and stuff, but I've been meeting with the members of the school, member of the county and stuff about our program. We have been used with other cities as a model to get other cities involved in a similar type program. In fact, one city was asking about how to put it together and stuff, and the representative from the county said, "Well, just copy Tarpon's because theirs is working good." So not only is this program done, this is a program where they're modeling in Pinellas County to do other cities and get other kids involved this way. When you talk about expansion, we are also talking about, and we interviewed our first kid on Monday, we're looking at a program during the school year, which is a voluntary, non-paid type program. It's through their business program. They've got an entrepreneurial group at the high school, and we've been meeting with them to get some kids involved in a program, which again, they hope to take maybe to other places in the county, but we're going to kind of start it here as a model since we started the summer one. We've got our first one that we're going to be bringing to IT. I think you interviewed him, and there may be a couple more. What we're emphasizing with the school is we not only want to look at those kids that, you know, the kids that want to go into positions like engineering or stuff like that to go to water plant, but in the entrepreneurial area, the high school, the class, it's all type of entrepreneurs. So for instance, there's somebody who may want to start their own landscaping business. We've got a city arborist, so we would place him in there. So we're also encouraging them to look at those kind of kids, not just academic emplacement, but kids who want to start their own business, whether it's painting, building, construction. We would put them with our building people. Arbor, you know, landscaping stuff, we put it in there. So we're in the process of developing a program where it would be an unpaid intern during the school year, and then maybe those people would go into the summer program right in there in a paid position. That's where we'd come back to you, and I'll be looking throughout the budget year maybe to add some to see how it works out and stuff. But we are involved countywide and through Tarpon High in doing this, and hopefully, you know, the program we started by bringing in some kids for the summer is going to grow even more. So I'll keep you apprised of that, how that goes, and how we get that process going, but it's expanding each year, so I'll let you know.
I love to hear that. I love to hear that we're leading by example in the City of Tarpon Springs, so I appreciate that information.
Good. Thank you. We are now go to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward. Please state your name and your address for the record. You will be given four minutes. Good to have you back. Some of you have already voted. For those of you who have not, this is for you. Tampa Bay Times, Sunday, October 23rd, Perspective: Some Slick, Shady Solar Shenanigans. Dateline: Tallahassee. The policy director of a think tank hired by Florida's largest electric utilities admitted at a conference this month what opponents have long claimed. The industry attempted to deceive voters into supporting restrictions on the expansion of solar by shrouding Amendment 1 as a pro-solar amendment. Sal Nuzio, a vice president of the James Madison Institute in Tallahassee, disclosed a strategy used by the state's largest utilities to create and finance Amendment 1 at the State Energy Environmental Leadership Summit in Nashville, October 2nd. Nuzio called the amendment, which has received more than $21 million in utility industry financing, "an incredible savvy maneuver," quote-unquote, "that," quote, "would completely negate anything they, the pro-solar interests, would try to do either legislatively or constitutionally down the road," according to an audio recording of the event supplied to the Times Herald. To the degree that we can use a little bit of political jujitsu and take what they're kind of pinning us on and use it to our benefit, either in policy and legislation or in constitutional referendums, if that's the direction you want to take, use the language of promoting solar and kind of put in these protections for consumers that choose not to install rooftop," unquote. The comments underscore claims made by opponents to the amendment of the November ballot, which was formed to undercut attempts to allow third-party sales of rooftop solar by leaving voters with the impression that their alternative amendment will expand solar generation in Florida. You can go to their archives to read the rest. The point is, they're trying to trick us. It's the utility corporates. They're the same ones that, if you look at your electric bill, has a charge on their asset allocation, which goes to fund bonds to bail out what they screwed up in Crystal River. And our legislature still has yet to do anything to reverse that charge or to get it off our backs. It's going to be on there for 20 years. You can look that up in the business section. So for those of you who have not voted, this is your last chance to vote no on one. I don't know about you, but I've seen the ads. They come out all pretty. I even saw one, I couldn't believe it. They had firefighters on there saying it was like, "If you allow this, don't allow the solar people who want to install solar things, it's going to be unsafe." No, that's not true. They still have to go through the same permit process that anybody else does to have to put something in your house. So don't be deceived. It's critical. It's critical, because it's going to cost us... Florida is the sunshine state. We've been lagging for years. What if in the future, the City of Tarpon Springs wants, a company comes to them and says, "Look, you've got all this flat rooftop all over these buildings. We'll put in solar panels. We'll provide you the electric that comes out of it. You just pay a small whatever fee. Costs you less than what Duke Energy..." Because if Duke Energy controls the solar market, which is the only reason they finally now are looking at solar is because they have a control, a way to sell it to you instead of you independently, which you've had a choice for years, and now it's getting so it's even more affordable and easier, and the panels and the solar systems and what... I know people make fun of Musk, but he's on the right track about storage and battery capacity, because that's what it's all about. Because if you could store your energy from the hot days and use it in the cool nights, you're going to save a lot of money, and the utility companies won't. You know this story. Thank you. Anybody else has any comments? Here none? We are now going to the item number 1A, which is a proclamation on a Veterans Day. Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation. Whereas on a Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women. We, in defense of our freedom, have bravely worn the uniform of the United States, and whereas Americans' veterans answer the call when asked to protect our nation and steel toe in the face of grave danger and enable our nation to become the greatest force for freedom in human history. Members of the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, the Marines, the Coast Guard have answered their high calling and serve and have helped secure America in every turn. Whereas our country is forever indebted to the veterans for their courage and service. Whereas we all remember and honor those who laid down their lives for freedom. These brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit, and whereas on a Veterans Day, we'll remember those heroes for their loyalty and dedication. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuzis, by virtue of authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2016, as the Veterans Day. Mr. Michael Fankos, would you please come to receive the proclamation? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Are there any commission comments? No. The next item on the agenda is 1B. Commissioner Slattery will read the proclamation of the SEDAW Initiative.
Proclamation and recognition of the efforts of the SEDAW Initiative, November 1st, 2016. Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs desires that women and girls who live in the city enjoy all rights, privileges, and remedies that are bestowed on all people in the U.S., no matter their race, national origin, gender, or religious belief. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is a city that shall not tolerate discrimination against women or girls or violence against them in any form. And whereas the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women SEDAW promotes human rights and opens opportunities for women and girls in all areas of society. And whereas the empowerment of women is central to building democratic, peaceful, and prosperous societies. And whereas the SEDAW campaign is an effort that provides tools and leadership to empower local women's organizations and provides an opportunity for dialogue on how to address gaps in women's full equality. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Susan Slattery, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby recognize the efforts of the SEDAW Initiative in promoting the health and safety of women and girls in our community. And I believe we have Noel Clark here from Sunco Center. And Noel, want to say a few words? Okay.
On behalf of the United Nations Association Tampa Bay Chapter Board, I want to thank the City of Tarpon Springs, the Board of Commissioners, and of course specifically the mayor for supporting gender equality and making the City of Tarpon Springs a city for SEDAW. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? No. Any public comments on this item? Here none? We are now going to the item 1C. Commissioner Seber will read the proclamation of pancreatic cancer.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation. Whereas in 2016, an estimated 53,070 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 41,780 will die from this disease. And where pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to become the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and it is projected to become the second-leading cause by 2020. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 71% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. And whereas approximately 3,080 deaths will occur in Florida in 2016. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Tarpon Springs are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effects of effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Reyes Seber, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 17, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. And are Ethel and Pete McKenzie here?
Karen Lipsy, Tammy Whacker, Gary Lipsy, Susie Swindon, and Danny Rollins.
Commissioner, mayor, vice mayor, other commissioners, thank you for proclaiming November 17, 2016 to be World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the City of Tarpon Springs. I, along with these other folks here, volunteer for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. It is the leader in the fight against pancreatic cancer deaths. We're the only national organization creating hope in a comprehensive way through research, patient support, community outreach, and advocacy for a cure. It is, as you said in the proclamation, it is a dire diagnosis. It is the only major cancer with a five-year survival rate still in the single digits at 8%. That's simply unacceptable. We can do better, and we will do better through research. We just had a major fundraiser this past weekend in the City of St. Petersburg, our Purple Stride 5K Run Event, and raised $200,000 for research. So we're excited about that. It's personal for many of us. We've all been touched by pancreatic cancer in some way. On November 18th of this year, I will become a seven-year survivor of pancreatic cancer. I'm one of those very lucky ones. Ethel is also a survivor. There just aren't that many of us who are around to fight it and help others, so we have loved ones of those who have lost their battle. It's a very important fight. We ask everyone that on November 17th, that you wear purple, that is our color, to support pancreatic cancer awareness. So wear your purple tie, your purple pantsuit, your purple dress, whatever you have to wear, and I invite each of you to wear purple on November 17th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Any commission comment? Next item is 1D. Commissioner Banther will read the next proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the Juvenile Welfare Board, known as JWB, was created in 1946 by the citizens of Pinellas County, who were the first in the nation to collectively say "All Children Matter" by investigating tax dollars for children's services. Whereas this was at a time when few alternatives existed for troubled children, and some as young as three years old were being housed in adult jail. Whereas the juvenile court judge Lincoln Boge made a plea to concerned citizens, including members of the Junior League of St. Petersburg, led by Malin Holland Barton, this group joined forces with attorney Leonard Cooperman, who drafted the legislation to create the JWB under a special act of the Florida Legislature. And whereas on November 5th, 1946, Pinellas County citizens passed a referendum to create the Juvenile Welfare Board of Pinellas County. And whereas JWB serves as a convener forging partnerships for important children's issues such as childhood hunger, preventable child deaths, and grade-level reading. And whereas for the past 70 years, a total of 100 and And whereas for the past 70 years, a total of 117 men and women have provided unvaluable service as members of the JWB Board of Directors whose charge is to oversee and guide the investments entrusted by Pinellas County citizens for children's services. Now therefore I Commissioner David Banther by virtue of the authority vested in the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida do hereby proclaim November 5th, 2016 as Juvenile Welfare Board Day. It's to be received by Brian, I can't pronounce that last name. Thank you, sir.
First, an apology for the longest proclamation in Tarpon Springs' history. Must have been an attorney that drafted that, anyway. Second, a thank you on behalf of the JWB Board of Directors and Dr. Marcy Biddleman. It was 70 years ago that the fine citizens of Tarpon Springs and all of Pinellas County voiced their opinion that all children matter and created the Juvenile Welfare Board by special act. That was 70 years ago. Today, we fund over 80 programs serving over 50,000 children within Pinellas County, and we couldn't do that without your support and your partnership in these efforts. So, again, for that partnership and for your assistance, we thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Any commission comments? The next item is an addendum. Item number 1E. Vice Mayor Terrapany will read the Outdoor Performance Assembly Volunteer Appreciation Day.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas leadership, performance, and the pursuit of excellence are the hallmarks of the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble. And whereas collaboration between students, parents, and the community is the foundation that the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble is built upon. And whereas the lessons both in the classroom and in life allow the students in the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble to become the best versions of themselves while they become the leaders of the future. And whereas the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble's success is made possible by its volunteers and proud supporters of the arts. And whereas these volunteers are an essential part of the team, making sure that all resources needed for the student performers are designed, constructed, and incorporated into every production. And whereas men and women work tirelessly, often seven days per week, side by side with one another to provide the students of the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble with the best opportunity for success. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes and expresses gratitude to the dedication of the volunteers and proud supporters of the Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble. Now therefore I Vice Mayor Townsend Terrapany by the virtue of the authority vested in the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida do hereby proclaim November 3, 2016 as Tarpon Springs Outdoor Performance Ensemble Volunteer Appreciation Day. And I encourage all of our citizens to recognize these individuals for their significant impact they have made and continue to make in Tarpon Springs High School and throughout Pinellas County schools as a vital component of the Leadership Conservatory of the Arts. This will be given to Dan Carlson, BJ Wolf, and Clay Vining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Chair Terrapany. We really appreciate this. We're extremely humbled to have received this, the countless thousands of hours that so many of our parents and supporters have put forth to support the Tarpon Springs Leadership Conservatory for the Arts. It's a fantastic organization. It really does create tomorrow's leaders. It's really incredible. They express it through the music. They express it through gifting back to the community and different events throughout the county. You know, we really appreciate the support that the Commissioners and the Mayor and everybody has put forth towards the Leadership Conservatory. And if you guys didn't know, we just went to Atlanta and where we won the super regionals. So, Tarpon Springs is back on the board again. The kids are tirelessly up there right now. They'll be there until 9:30 tonight. Parents will probably be there till 11 o'clock. And then this Thursday, everybody that's in the room, you are invited to an open community event at the high school where we will be presenting our show. It's called the Friends and Family Night. So, please come on in. It's free. It's a really unique opportunity to understand what their performance is about this year. And then ultimately, next Wednesday, several of the parents start heading up to Indianapolis where Tarpon Springs will jump on the buses on Thursday and we will perform and hopefully bring back another grand national championship for the City of Tarpon Springs. So, thank you very much. Again, we're very humbled. This is very fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? The next item on the agenda is item number two, Legislative Update. Our state representative, Chris Sprouse, is going to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for having me. As somebody who graduated from Sunset Hills Elementary School and was raised here in Tarpon Springs, it's truly an honor to serve you in the Florida House. The first thing I wanted to say, Mayor, with your permission, is thank you to all the Commissioners and to the city staff. As you all know, probably the most difficult and most important part of our job is the service of constituents. And we really never know what those items are until we get a phone call one day about what's happening. But I can tell you this, anytime that involves an issue with the City of Tarpon Springs, whether it's the Commissioners or the Police Department, the city clerk, or the city manager, all of the staff is tremendously helpful in helping us resolve those issues in a way that's satisfactory for our constituents. So, I wanted to thank you all for that. A few things I wanted to touch on that are specific to Tarpon and then a couple of things that we did up in Tallahassee. The first item, and I know that you all have spent a great deal of time working on this issue, is the dredging in the sponge docks. I think that we can all agree that people who love Tarpon Springs by its very nature love the sponge docks and its history. But also, we also know that as an economic driver, how important the sponge docks is to not only us from a tourism perspective, but for our commercial fishermen as well. And I know many of you have spoken with those commercial fishermen and they relay to you what they've relayed to me, which is they have difficulty turning around in the channel and need the dredging. We've helped to start that process, myself and Senator Latvalla, talking with our county commission regarding the allocation of BP funds to begin the study process that the Army Corps of Engineers needs to begin what is often a very long and slow federal process. But we are committed to starting it as rapidly as possible. And I can say both myself and Senator Latvalla are committed to doing whatever we can on the state level to moving that along as rapidly as possible. The second issue is, per resolution that this commission had passed, I believe a year ago or so, about the renaming of a portion of Alt 19 after Officer Charles Condeck. That was wrapped up in a transportation bill, and I'm sorry to say that got slowed down for issues or reasons that had nothing to do with the renaming. What I think we're going to do next session is kind of bring that apart from that process so it doesn't get stalled again. We'll continue to do that and make sure that we have that portion of alternate 19 named after Officer Condeck. It's a very, very small way for us to say thank you to him and his service. One item I want to mention to you all so that you can share it with the folks who you represent in the City of Tarpon with some groups in the City of Tarpon, is myself and Senator Latvalla are hosting a farm share right here in the City of Tarpon Springs at the CAP Center on November 18th at 401 East Martin Luther King Drive between 9:30 and 11:00 a.m. I know there's a lot of great groups here in the City of Tarpon who work with folks who are struggling, particularly those who need to be fed, like the Shepherd Center, who work all year round to make sure that happens. This is a one-day event that we're doing, but we hope that you'll encourage groups and folks who might benefit for some food and some resources during this time of year to come out and join us at the CAP Center and come and take some items for their families. So, we'll be there 9:30 to 11:00 on November 18th, myself and Senator Latvalla at the Farm Share at the CAP Center. Mayor, a couple of things I wanted to mention about the legislative session. You know, when I got elected, there's really two areas in particular that I wanted to work on, and that was healthcare and education. And in addition to being interested in those issues, it's 2/3 of our legislative budget, over $80 billion, is consumed in either healthcare or in education. And one of the things I repeatedly hear from the folks that we represent on the healthcare side is that they would go in for a procedure, it could be surgery, it could be a knee replacement, and they would get surprise bills that they didn't expect. And many of us who've tried to navigate insurance companies and medical billing or have ever asked for a medical bill, we probably didn't even know what it said. I know I couldn't read it. It's a difficult process. What we were seeing happen is individuals who had really tried to plan financially for their medical procedures would weeks or months later receive a bill in the mail they didn't plan for and really damage them financially and their families. So, myself and Senator Bradley, who represents North Florida, put together a healthcare transparency bill, and really it does two things. The first thing is it puts the patient in the driver's seat of getting their medical bills. In that, when they walk into a hospital, they're entitled to a few things. They're entitled to a patient-specific cost estimate. You know, we're so used to shoppers, whether we get on Amazon and we order something, we see the price and we make a decision. It doesn't work that way in healthcare. Even when we plan an operation, we pay after the fact. What this does is allow the patients to get that bill in advance, a specific estimate to let them know how much they'll be out of pocket. They're entitled to know if there's going to be an individual who's going to be working on them who's out of their insurance network so that they can plan accordingly. They're also entitled to that same information from their insurance company. So, it's hospitals and insurance companies. The second thing is, it will create a state database that will allow an individual, for example here in Tarpon Springs, who can get online, type in 34689, put in their procedure, and get a cost estimate at the various healthcare facilities around Tampa Bay. It will also have quality information so that they can get a snapshot of what they are looking at for the cost of their medical procedure. And really, the goal here is to start a process where number one, we push the patients in the driver's seat. We protect them from surprise medical bills. And third, that if there's more transparency in how healthcare billing is done and what kind of costs, our hope is that in continuing to have a free-market approach in the legislature to healthcare that we can begin to see costs come down. The second issue is in education. You know, I'm a firm believer, somebody who has had a public school education, and my dad became a teacher in a small private school so that I could get a private school education. For someone who's had a diverse background in education, that really the best people to make decisions for a child getting an education is their parent. So, I've always worked to make sure that we empower parents to make decisions for their children. So, I filed a bill that passed last session, it's called an Open Enrollment Bill. And essentially, it says this. If you have your child in a public school and you would like to send your child to another public school, you can send your child to any public school you want so long as there's space. We never take space away from a child who lives in that area or is zoned for that area or is in the district. But when there's rooms in other schools, and I'll give you an example, not too far out of my district, in another district, there's a school that's well beyond capacity, and it's an F-school. There are schools in the southern part of my district that are A-schools that are not at capacity. I would love the opportunity to give children who might not be in a school that's performing for them the opportunity to get a world-class education. So, that's what the bill did. I'm proud to say that it passed with bipartisan support and has become law July 1st. The third issue is something that really does impact all of us, and that is the Public Service Commission and how they regulate utilities. The first bill that I filed when I got elected two years ago was a bill to reform the Public Service Commission. And part of that had to do with billing, part of it had to do with deposits, and part of it had to do with the Commissioners themselves. We are all term limited, the elected officials in this room. Public Service Commissioners are not until we pass this bill. Now they are. So, now they have term limits. We made sure that we reined in some of the deposits because in speaking with some of the businesses in our community, the large deposits were crushing on business. We reined that practice in. We also passed what's called a securization bonding model that we put into effect that will save an estimated $600 to $800 million for Duke Energy customers over the next several years. So, we're proud of those reforms. There's a start. There's more to do, but we're happy with where we've gone, both in healthcare, in education, and in regulation of utilities. And Mayor, we hope we'll continue with that success. And with that, Mayor, with your permission, I'm happy to take any questions from you or the other Commissioners.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your support to Tarpon Springs, especially I want to thank you for your support to provide funding for dredging the Anclaw River, which is so important to our local economy, to our heritage. I will be talking to you more in detail because we're going to need the sprawl site, to purchase the sprawl site right near on the Anclaw River. So, this is very important to our, as you know, to our economy. Also, I want to thank you for your support to the seniors, to the schools, and your effort to reduce property tax. Thank you very much for all that you do. Vice Mayor Terrapany.
Thank you. Mr. Representative.
Sir.
Just want to thank you for being here tonight and giving us your update. Your achievements in the House at this point already in your first term are so vast that I won't even, you know, go into mentioning them, but I'll tell you that I appreciate them. So, for those of you who don't know, the representative and I went to middle school together. He talked about his father, who was a U.S. history teacher. We played basketball together, or should I say I played and he didn't play? But, I mean, that's just, you know, a side joke. But I'll say that the representative has done good things for us. He truly is passionate about Tarpon Springs and his district as a whole. I'm thankful for all that, Chris. I'm thankful for everything that you're doing for us. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of your work, and I'm most importantly thankful for your friendship to not only myself, but more importantly to this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber.
Thank you for being here, Chris. Not only kudos to everything you've been doing, you've been amazing with what you've done in the short amount of time, but I also appreciate how accessible you are. I know that we've met personally. Your emails are returned promptly or your staff returns them. You're always on top of things and you always care about your constituents and who you're serving. So, I really appreciate that. I think that's amazing. And I want to thank you for your support to Tarpon Springs and again for everything you do, and congratulations on your new little baby.
Thank you.
Commissioner Panther.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Chris, I have said for quite some time that Tarpon Springs has not had such a strong rep up in Tallahassee since you've been elected. And, you know, we can only do so much here on the local level, and that was really put to light with the Dredge Project and how quickly with you and others that we've been able to get things accomplished. And so, we heavily depend upon our state officials, you know, because all politics are local indeed. And I'm very much, I did know about your school choice bill, if you will, if you call it that. That means a lot. I know my family with it, with my oldest, who has some special needs, that we went through a six-month legal battle with the school board for just a small issue of placement. So, that can help a lot of families that can't afford those things and now get the kids in schools where they need to be for their services. So, that's a great program. And then as well, your program that you've done for the medical billing. I mean, I work in finance and I can't read those bills as well, and it really helps it a lot when people have choice and they're informed of other choices and obviously it makes no sense in the market system that we live in that we don't approach healthcare in the same manner. I think that is a great first start for that. So, again, thank you for all you do for Tarpon and as well how you collab with our other representatives, our state senator and then Chris down county. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you. Representative, thank you for being here today. Thank you for your efforts up in Tallahassee, and I know as Vice Mayor has mentioned, you have accomplished so much in your first term, and we really appreciate what you're doing for Tarpon Springs as well. You know, you're going to do it to our heart, too. So, I would like to see if I can come out and help with the farm share that you're doing.
Please.
So, I'll contact your office and...
We'd love to have you, any of you. We'd like to join us. It'd be great.
See if I can come out and help, but thank you so much. It's a pleasure having you here.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. If you don't mind, we'd like to take some public comments, if that's okay with you?
Be great.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Darlene Vadi Kiotis. I live at 49 West Center Street, Unit 113, here in Tarpon Springs, and I'm speaking from a personal point of view. I have known Chris for a number of years, but more as an instructor when he was a student at Genesis Prep when I was a teacher there. And every now and then, I've seen Chris and his dad, who's a fantastic, fantastic history teacher. And I'm so very proud of all that Chris has done and accomplished in such a short, very short period of time. He's done a terrific job with all of his advertisements for reelection, and I wish him only the very, very best. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We're all good with transparency. The more we have available to make choices, that's good. So it'd be great if, when you walked into a hospital, you could at least get a list of what charges are or stuff, you know, like you go to a restaurant, you know you're going to order something, you know what you're going to pay for. So the more we can have that transparency in all of our medical procedures, I'm all for it. A question as far as the open enrollment, I had read about it, and Representative Sproles just confirmed it, that that open enrollment allows you to cross county lines. Now, not to demean Pasco, but I have to say I think Pinellas has better schools than Pasco. And what happens when we have seats here in Pinellas, whether it's at Tarpon or Eastlake or where else, and we're getting people from Pasco, and we pay Pinellas County school taxes? So is there a process where the counties can get reimbursed from the other county for the cost of that student, or are we going to be absorbing the burden of students coming here, or do they just look at it as a net effect of maybe our students going to south across the bridge to Manatee or across to Hillsborough or something like that? So I'm kind of curious on that mechanism. As far as the public utilities, I still haven't seen an effort by our representatives to get Duke's hand out of our pocket on this asset allocation. They've been, we're hiding it before for years, but now they now have to show it in the bills. It needs to be taken care of. And as far as the Public Utilities Commission, maybe we need to go back to having elected public utility commissioners as compared to those appointed, who usually are there because they've worked in the special industry, special interest industry, either in utilities or companies supplying products to the utilities. We have to start looking forward and start moving towards alternative energies. We cannot continue to rely on pipelines, oil, and coal. We have abundant solar energy. It's, and we're getting to the point now where we're technologically able through our processes to maximize this and really move forward on this. And to have the utilities and the energy companies still holding on to an old way of doing things. And not only does it cost us in the long run in product, in our pockets, it also keeps us from progressing and moving forward and giving ourselves the ability to be self-sufficient and not depending on Germany or China or some of these other countries for providing to us these mechanisms to be self-sufficient. So I know a lot of this is out of Representative Sproles' hands, but what is in his hands is getting Duke Energy out of our pockets and getting a public utility commission that is more representative of the people and not the utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You're none. Representative Sproles, thank you so much. Thank you for coming and thank you for your support for the seat of power.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Item number three, which is the Public Art Committee Annual Report, has been postponed until December 6th. We are now going to the item number four, which is an update, the Bayou Area Motel. Chief Cochran.
Thank you, Harbaugh Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Back on September 12th, we had a community meeting regarding these properties, and one of the excellent philosophies of our police department is community policing, and I know some members of the audience that were at that meeting are here. There were really a lot of good ideas that were presented at that meeting. We had a chance to really engage the community and get their input, and so, you know, it kind of strengthens our efforts once we get the community behind us. So since that time, a lot of efforts have been undertaken regarding these hotels. So I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint, we'll give you an update, and we'll open up for questions. So we're talking about Spring Bayou initiatives, so we all know the hotels that we're talking about. There's three of them. That's 57 West Tarpon Avenue, also known as the Sun Bay Motel, 110 West Tarpon Avenue, also known as the Tarpon Inn, and 199 Grand Boulevard, known as Eureka Apartments. Here's just some pictures of the locations that we're talking about. It's 57 West Tarpon Avenue, 110 West Tarpon Avenue, and 199 Grand Boulevard. I want to go back to the past a little bit. One of the things, and we knew we had problems with these hotels from a police perspective for a long time, and we have thrown a lot of resources into trying to attack this crime problem. One of the big operations that we did back in June of 2015, we called Operation Room Service. It was a collaborative effort with the Countywide Narcotics Task Force to really focus on the drug problem that was going on at these hotels. We had vice detectives involved, Pinellas County Sheriff's Department and other agencies. It was a roughly eight-to-ten-month operation, all undercover. Really can't get into the mechanics of it, but we really hit them hard. In that operation, we arrested 21 individuals, we had 81 charges, obviously the three locations that we're talking about, Sun Bay, Tarpon Inn, and Eureka Apartments. Narcotic sales included crack cocaine, powder cocaine, Xanax, Dilaudid, oxycodone, methamphetamine, and marijuana. Some of these drugs, as you know, are quite powerful and really create a lot of problems in those areas, especially with people that are using them. Also, a firearm was purchased by an undercover agent, culminated with a multi-agency roundup. We hit them pretty hard. These are the individuals that were arrested in that operation, and most of them, I don't really know the status of where they are in the criminal justice system, but we really did put a dent into the operations going on there. Now, we know strategically in law enforcement that when we do this, because of the locations that, you know, problems still occur. There, you know, if we let off, or if we take our foot off the pedal, so to speak, that this problem's going to come back. The drug dealers or the people that are involved in drug activity are going to gravitate back to this location. So really what we do is it's multi-pronged front patrol. We get patrol involved, we get detectives involved, we get other agencies involved, and then really what we try and do is, you know, just create a really strong presence in that area, foot patrol, directed patrols, citizen contact. So basically, we really try and keep a really strong presence so we can kind of keep some of the criminal element out of there. Unfortunately, on August 27, 2016, we had a homicide at Sun Bay Motel. Now, you can't change what happened regarding the homicide, but from a police perspective, once somebody kills somebody, it's very important that we get that person off the street. And in this particular case, within 24 hours, we had that subject in custody and arrested. It was really some fine police work by our agency and a bunch of other agencies that were involved. A lot of investigative techniques and technology was used to bring this subject into custody. But, you know, an act like this, a homicide like this, is quite disturbing anywhere, you know, that in any community we get a homicide, it's just not good. So that was a recent past. That was something that, you know, for us was just unacceptable, for the community was unacceptable. But I want to go back from July 1st to September 1, 2016, and this is just after we did Operation Room Service. And this is just kind of a snapshot from our CAD RMS system, and that's just our computer database that tracks pretty much everything that we do. If you look at Sun Bay Motel over that year period, now, we took some incidents out, some very minor incidents, just simply couldn't fit them on the PowerPoint presentation. So a lot of the minor stuff was taken out, but we had over a year at Sun Bay, 90 incidents with 15 arrests. I just talked about the homicide that we had. But what you can also see on the bottom is, we had 146 proactive and directed patrols. So we're really, after the operation and before it, but we're keeping a very strong presence at that location. Tarpon Inn, over that year period, we had 97 incidents, 10 arrests. Again, we had one major incident that was a sexual battery. We're trying to kind of highlight some of the more serious crimes that occurred, and if you see there, we had 70 proactive and directed patrols at that location. 199 Grand Boulevard, Eureka Apartments, over that snapshot for one year, we had 31 incidents, six arrests, major incident. Obviously, our officer, a horrible tragedy, was killed on 12/21/2014 at that location. You also see 10 proactive and directed patrols at the Eureka Apartments. Just want to go through a couple months here, just a snapshot moving forward from August through October. Sun Bay Motel, we had some incidents there, again, the homicides included in there, but proactive policing accounted 59% of all police activity. At the Tarpon Inn, we had some incidents there, proactive policing accounts for 50% of all police activity. And Eureka Apartments in August, it was all proactive policing, we had no incidents. Moving forward to September 2016, again, Sun Bay Motel, proactive policing, 66% of all activity. Tarpon Inn, proactive policing accounts 36% of all activity. And Eureka Apartments or 199 Grand Boulevard, proactive policing accounts for 75% of all activity. And as we move forward to October, just this past month, 2016, Sun Bay Motel, again, 93% proactive police activity. Tarpon Inn, 80%, all proactive policing. So you see a lot of these, a lot of our activity is us being there. And in 199 Grand, Eureka Apartments, 78% of all activities proactive policing. I, for one, as a police chief, you know, statistics are great and they're good for intelligence-led policing and doing a lot of stuff, but I always tell people that statistics are cyclical. They go up and down depending on what goes on. In any one community, you could have one homicide the year before and five, you know, the year after, and, you know, your homicide rate is just through the charts because maybe one person committed, you know, a bunch of homicides in one area. So statistics, again, is something that we look at. We look at for intelligence-led policing, we look at where to put our resources, but, you know, they are cyclical, they do go up and down. But for the purposes of PowerPoint, we just wanted to kind of show you, you know, what was going on at these hotels. Our approach, I've always been one to believe in multi-pronged approaches. You've got to be multidimensional when you attack a problem, you don't want to be one-dimensional, it's just police work. I've said it at the public meeting, it's very difficult to arrest yourself out of a situation like this, but that is one avenue, obviously, that the police department uses. But our approach really is multifaceted. We've been utilizing various departments within the city of Tarpon Springs to include the police department, code enforcement. If you look in red, I know it's hard to read, but our building department, fire marshal, and code enforcement division currently, Sun Bay has 22 violations, and 199 Grand or Eureka Apartments has 11 violations. Some of these are serious. And I know that our building official met with them today, and there's even more coming forward. So we're really kind of, really holding them accountable for a lot of the building code violations, fire code violations that are going on there because it's just unacceptable. So we are moving forward, you know, with that avenue of it. Obviously, engineering department's been involved, planning and zoning's been involved in this. We're also seeking to incorporate other agencies as well, local and state. Obviously, we did check with the state, all of them have valid licenses, but again, we continue to work with those agencies and continue to monitor the status of these hotels and some of the things going on here that may affect their licensing. Obviously, increased presence and enforcement, overt and covert enforcement, obviously, we go back to Operation Room Service, again, big impact on them, but a lot of resources and a lot of time to do those types of operations. Multi-pronged approach with surveillance, citizen complaints, or citizen contacts, knock and talks, arrests, citations, code enforcement issues, intelligence gathering, undercover We also met with the owners of both motels, that's Sun Bay Motel and Tarpon Inn. We explained the concerns, we discussed expectations, conducted security surveys on these properties, made recommendations to combat criminal activity, provide crime prevention services, described nuisance abatement ordinance, which is something that we have at our disposal. We also received a lot of positive impact from 110 West Tarpon Avenue in our meeting. He's actually putting cameras at that location and giving us access through the internet. Room accessibility for us, screening procedures. One of the things I liked about meeting with the owner of this hotel is he's changing his business model. He's increasing his rents, he's renovating the rooms, so hopefully, the clientele that he's going to attract will be, you know, better than what he had there in the past. So I think really him changing his business model is a big, will be a big impact for us. And as you know, we held a community meeting on 9/12/2016. I really thought that was a good meeting, really a lot of good input from the community, a lot of concern, and we like to see that. We're not afraid to listen to what people have to say. But again, that was a very good meeting. Obviously, that created a Facebook page that people have been following. It's called Better Way on the Bayou, so, you know, we got some social media involved in it, but again, we really love the fact that some residents are involved and people are concerned and are willing to work with us. We've increased contacts with local businesses, we work in partnership to address criminal activity and quality of life issues. Some of the progress, again, code enforcement, we're tracking open cases to gain compliance, building and fire inspections with required corrections. We had a roof repair at 57 West Tarpon Avenue, Sun Bay Motel. We have fire code violations addressed and corrected, but again, they have a lot of violations that right now are hanging over their head, the two, Sun Bay and Eureka, that they're going to have to correct or they're going to have problems. One of the other things we did, we looked at some what we call SEPTED principles, that's crime prevention through environmental design, again, looking at the environment, seeing what we can do to deter criminal activity. We worked with Duke Energy to increase the wattage of current lighting and additional streetlights in the area along Grand Boulevard. They did a lot of tree trimming, which is good, you know, you kind of take that canopy out and light just really floods the area, much better view for police at night. The only property we still have to meet with is the one at Eureka Apartments, and strategically held off, but we will be meeting with her soon. Conducted security surveys of the property, recommendations for improvement landscaping and lighting. 110 Tarpon Avenue really did a lot of cooperation with our code enforcement officer. We put signs all over the place. He signed up for Crime Watch, you know, again, just taking these steps to make these areas kind of target hard in these areas to keep criminals away. As I discussed, again, fire and building inspections were done of all properties. We obtained trespass authorization for both motels. Crime prevention increased neighborhood watch, which is really good. As a part of that community meeting, we had our Crime Watch captain for the city there, you know, talking to people and taking applications and getting people involved. Again, the more people that we get involved in the community that are kind of our eyes and ears, the better it is for us and it kind of augments our resources. But one of the things we did, too, we worked with the residents, we established a Crime Watch in Villa Pomosa, which is really important because, you know, they're right across the street from Grand, and you get in partnership with them and they start reporting crime and kind of being our eyes and ears out there. That can really help us, especially if they see activity going on and we get calls. Usually, our response times are really excellent. So we have a Crime Watch already established in what we call the Fruit Bowl section of town, but we also increased that by about 20 members, and that was again, as a result of that community meeting. Just want to show you some of the lighting on 199 Grand. This is very important because that area is very dark. So she did put some lighting up there along the sides, along the back. The visibility at night is 100% better for our officers to see what's going on there. Again, most criminals don't like to operate, you know, in plain view. Signage for 110 West Tarpon Avenue, this is a standard thing that we do, we have them up at the college. If anyone wants to partner with us, we'll put signs there, again, more visibility, letting people know that, you know, hey, you know, we're watching and, you know, we're here and we will be here if anything goes on. Lighting at 110 West Tarpon Avenue, that hotel put all kinds of lights up on the eaves there, so that parking lot is really well lit now at night. Some of the things I've mentioned in the past, we talked about tree clearing on Grand Boulevard, some of the, you know, again, some of the canopy that we're blocking out a lot of that light from getting into that roadway and lighting it up, so, you know, we could have a little more security for the residents out there. Future, as we move forward, continue to increase presence in law enforcement. I mean, we are working these properties, patrol, detectives, we are out there as much as we possibly can be. Again, we're going to address some appropriate resources, channels, continue to monitor crime trends and code enforcement issues, continue to contact with owners and address issues and problems solved, work with various departments, prove quality of life issues, some of that stuff you already see going on, determine if owners are attempting requested suggestions for combating issues, and maintaining consistent contact with them. Use available affordable technology and resource, address the issues. One of the things that we really liked at 110, that again, we're piped in through the internet to their camera system. So that's really a big plus for us. Continue to work with city agencies and Duke Energy for lighting requirements or improvements. Simulating... disseminate information about progress to city entities and the public, and prepare for future BOC meetings in regard to this matter. So I gave you a pretty good overview of what's going on, again, from the line level, from enforcement agencies, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Cochen, thank you for the update. And I want to thank all the police officers that provided us with the outstanding service to our community. We have a problem in this area and we must resolve that. One way to resolve this area is to convert those properties, the south part of the Tarpon Avenue, the motel and the vacant property to public use. So this is a thing that we're going to be working for the future and I'd like to ask Mr. Licorice to share with us his findings that he has so far.
The only thing I have so far, and I believe you got my email from today that Commissioner Banther's asked to be put on the December 6 meeting for some further discussion on this. I've met with the owner of Sun Bay Motel today to discuss the possible option of the city purchasing his property. We had a good conversation, he is going to be taking the next few weeks to put some numbers together, we're going to be getting back together and hopefully I'll have that to report our progress at that meeting and take it further as an option that we may need to do with that particular motel.
Okay. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Terrapin.
Thank you. Chief, thanks for your updating your presentation tonight. I understand that, you know, I understand it's a multifaceted approach, but I also can appreciate what we're doing within the realm of our codes and things like that. So, excuse me, one of the most important things to me that was provided to us within our backup is this letterhead and it's in relation, it's addressed to the Fun City Enterprises Inc., which is basically the Sun Bay Motel. And just for the public, I'll say that it's addressed to whom it may concern and it's basically in relation to violations within the property. So it goes down a few sentences and it says, "You are hereby advised that the above referenced structure has numerous code violations. The nature and extent of these violations are such that they constitute an immediate health and safety concern." So then it goes on for pages and pages to actually list sections of the code and areas within the structure that are in code violation. And it gives until October 10th to rectify those. Obviously, you know, the majority of those haven't been done, so I can appreciate Mr. City Manager and also Commissioner Banther for putting, as a discussion and an update, this particular Sun Bay Motel for December 6. So when the city manager says that the owner of the motel was going to sharpen his pencil a little bit and get back to us on some numbers in regard to the city purchasing that, I think he's going to be calculating some of these repairs and some of these things that he would have to do in order to come into compliance, in order to stay in business versus potentially a sale price. So I can appreciate the way we're moving forward with this, but we definitely would like to have an answer sooner than later, so if there's not a willingness to sell, we can explore other avenues, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther?
Go ahead. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chief. I know we're spending a lot of time and resources and totaled the incidents in a year and obviously a lot of time and resources have been spent and we still have the problem. I appreciate the letter that we got also from Sun Bay and see all those violations. And if they decide to sell, they had 90 incidents out of the 218, so we would still continue to have the problem, I feel, if we don't have the other two properties taken care of. I do appreciate that the Tarpon Inn is trying to help and work with the city and has corrected some of the things that they have on their property. But I'm happy that we're having another meeting to move forward and see what's going to be done with Sun Bay and these violations that they have and if they correct them or what direction they're wanting to go in.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I as well thank you, Chief, for all you've done, you and your men and women. I know this is not extra work, it's part of your job, but it's been a big project for quite some time and it has picked up since we've had the homicide there. I think we're taking the correct approach. We are allowing the property owners to rectify the situation on their own and then we know as a board what we have to do if they don't do that. And I appreciate the approach that we're taking is fair to everybody involved, but yet we are enforcing our laws and our code and making sure that our citizens are protected and because the behavior that's been exhibited on those three properties is not acceptable anywhere in Tarpon Springs, especially not the Bayou. And I'm appreciative of the owner of the Tarpon Inn for making the improvements that he's made. If that's successful on his end, maybe that'll be kind of a model for, you know, because we have properties that are problems on a lesser scale throughout the city and that can be a model too for how owners can bring their properties into compliance. As far as you said, you've not met yet with the owner of the Eureka Apartments there?
That's correct.
On Grant, okay. And that's going to happen soon?
That's going to happen, correct.
Yeah, that's, especially in light of what's happened there, I just have zero tolerance or patience for anything there, so and I would suspect the owner would at least understand that as well and then cooperate. And I also appreciate members of the public who are here tonight, part of the group on Facebook, which has engaged people to be involved and people that are starting the different Crime Watch groups, because we said from the very beginning, we can't do this by ourselves, we can enforce it, but we need ideas from the public and they have been free flowing and hopefully by our next, well, by our first meeting in December, we as a board can discuss what our action is going to be based off what our city manager has to report from his findings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Slattery?
Thank you, Chief, thank you for the update and I know it has been cumbersome. It's this, these properties, I think, are taking so much away from the police department and they're tiring. And so I think that, well, first let me say that thank you, Commissioner Banther, for asking for this to be put on the agenda for December because this is something that was on my mind as well. I think we need to start moving forward. When you see the list of all these code violations, it's atrocious and I think that's our first step and, you know, there are steps we have to take as a city, legal steps, so we're moving in the right direction, but I think I would be, I'm very anxious to hear what comes back to us. Now, the city manager, are you meeting with the owner of the Sun Bay?
Yes, yes.
Do we have to have an attorney present or anything?
Not at this point. Obviously, if something, you know, would come back to you, would get the attorney involved, we got into real estate issues, we're just trying to talk, negotiate, state each other's case for what could be done and then bring it back. So at this stage, it's not, but it'll involve that at a later stage when we get down to point in the negotiation, we're actually know, you know, if he's willing and what he's willing to deal and of course, we've got to bring it back to you, obviously, to see if you're willing to proceed with that. So that'll all be coming back to you and then involving possibly the real estate person from the attorney's office and of course, coming back to the BOC meetings.
And that's only the first part, then there's the issue of the Tarpon Inn. I know they're making some effort, but I'm not sure, we'll see how that goes. I think that we need to tie in, that is what we call the Golden Crescent. We need to protect that area, it's a great, I mean, we have Epiphany down there, you know, we draw so many people down to that area and I think that it's time that we clean it up a little bit. And again, I think this is the first step and we have, I think we have a long way to go, but we are moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, again, thank you for everything that the police officers did, but also I want to make it clear that we're going to continue to be very aggressive on both locations, on the Tarpon Inn. This is not going to be just a one-time deal, they're going to do the improvements and they're going to relax. We're going to stay with them, we're going to be aggressive and the same thing goes for the apartments on Grand Boulevard.
No doubt.
No doubt.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now going to public comments on this item. Please state your name and your address for the record, you'll be given four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Dolly Vaticiotis, I live at 49 West Center Street, Unit 113, in the Villa Pomosa condominiums. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and I especially want to thank Officer Coach, Chief Cochen, excuse me, as well.
This is good.
Well, here the one and the same. Police Chief Cochen, you've done an excellent job as far as presenting the facts as to what's going on there. I agree with Commissioner Slattery, these violations, this excessive crime is just out of control. I am the homeowner president for the Villa Pomosa condominium association and in that regard, I represent over 50 homeowner units. And I must say to you that a number of them are elderly people who live in fear, they are absolutely fearful. We are right across the street from 199, I have some of my condo owners here, these lovely people are from Ireland and they too are concerned about the crime that they see in our community. I have had an opportunity to speak with many of them and I also want to note out that while we have developed a neighborhood watch, Crime Watch, it is the first time in 40 years of Villa Pomosa being in existence that we've had to take that supreme and extreme step to have a Crime Watch. Officer Olwick spoke to our Board of Directors as well as some of the other homeowners about what needed to be done and I appreciate him doing that as well as what the police department is doing. I'm not going to put that aside as being, you know, less than paramount in all of these efforts, but just as Officer Cochen, Police Chief Cochen, excuse me, has mentioned, quote, "We can't arrest out of this issue." Policing is not the solution for this. It overwhelms, as Commissioner Slattery says, the number of police department personnel that we have and what they can do to take care of the entire community of 25,000 people. There's a lot that goes on in this community. I also recognize the fact that the tree trimming has taken place, that has been an excellent, excellent thing that takes place, but also the lighting, the lighting at the corner. I live on Center Street, which is the darkest of the three streets, less trafficked, more, I guess, an area where this kind of nefarious activity would be most often occurring. I have met with some of you independently and I've shared these particular concerns, but we need to ask ourselves this particular question. Has the drug activity caused these rundown locations or has the rundown motels attracted the drug activity? And my strong feeling is it's the latter. The rundown motels have invited this drug activity, which we just can't tolerate in a community as beautiful as Tarpon Springs and most especially on the Golden Crescent. If it were in some other area, still a major concern, but an area that's trafficked by citizens, by tourists, by out-of-town folks altogether. And one drastic eye-opener, and for many of you that are travelers and use the internet, if you go to something called TripAdvisor and Google those three, those two different hotels, you'll find that in a rating of five, both the Tarpon Inn and Sun Bay have two stars out of five. And this has been as recent as this calendar year and with the improvements that the Tarpon Inn have made. In contrast, the 1910 Inn, which is just one door down, has four and a half stars. Now, these are people that visit our community that are telling us what they think of the places that they're staying in. And two stars out of five is unacceptable, it truly, truly is. And solution, in my feeling and many of my homeowner residents, is redevelopment. Policing will do something at this point, but redevelopment is truly the answer to the problem. And I understand what you're saying about a first step as far as this acquisition of the Sun Bay Motel. What happens if that happens? And what I hear tonight is not very enthusiastic. Am I timed? May I go on?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It doesn't seem to be really enthusiastic that that may come to fruition, but if it does, if the city is available to buy the Sun Bay Motel, what next? Is it going to be a parking lot? Who knows what it's going to be? I think that I'm a strong proponent of developing that corner of Tarpon Avenue and Spring Boulevard as a city park, a beautiful city park that can be most enhancing, stimulate redevelopment and improve the ambiance of our community. I mean, it's just an area where we have Epiphany, we have all kinds of events that happen in that area that would draw more and more people. How many have you seen weddings that take place right there on Spring Bayou? And wouldn't it be nice to have something with a gazebo or a park in that nearby area so that families could enjoy not just the event, but also an afterward type of thing? It would definitely improve the ambiance, there's no question about that. And as the mayor said initially, he addressed the Sun Bay Motel as well as the vacant lot and I feel that you should have an open mind to a concept of a city park. It may be one area that we'll pursue, but it should be an area that would be, especially if the owner of the Sun Bay, city manager, of course, chooses not to sell. He may decide that, hey, I need the money, I got grandkids to feed, whatever it might be, and you may not pay me enough. So I did send each of you a letter in, on the 19th of September, addressing the same issue. I did not receive responses from anyone. I'm a bit concerned about that, but I understand. I did meet with Mrs. Terrapini, who is a professional city planner, with the mayor as well as Police Chief Cochen, and at that time, the mayor expressed to me that any one of you can put this as an action item, as an item on the agenda, not just to continue to discuss and massage and think about, but as an action item. We need to go forward with this. We can't afford to have another homicide, we can't afford to have any other crime in that Golden Crescent, I feel very strongly about that. So I ask each of you tonight to think about that and I have the question, on December 6th, are we going to address the possibility of other options beside Sun Bay being purchased? Can we talk about a city park at that meeting, Mayor? Or have you opened that for possible discussion? Because if it's just more of the same and we rehash what we know as problems, we need to move forward. And I believe, I strongly believe, that we need to have the concept of a city park for all of the citizens to be able to use for whatever events. And with Epiphany coming up and with, you know, folks visiting on a regular, regular basis, please confirm that for me, one way or the other, I'd like to know that because I need to report to my residents, and as I say, many of them are elderly, many of them are fearful, very fearful. And it would just be a little more pleasant for all of us if we had the option of knowing that something was going to be done to improve that area without just postage stamping and band-aiding certain fixes. And again, I very much thank Police Chief Cochen, you did an outstanding job with your facts, your figures, but I truly believe that policing isn't the solution. I think it will just overextend your hard-working staff and redevelopment, in my feeling, in many of my residents, is the answer. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, Ms. Vaticiotis had mentioned that one street was still dark. We have lights ordered for that street, Duke Energy just hasn't installed them yet, but we are getting to it.
Thank you very much and I do appreciate the fact, the LED at the corner of Grand and Center, it's like a ball stadium, it's absolutely much, much better. Will there be lights on Grand as well?
Right now, we're focusing on that street you just talked about.
On Center, okay.
Three?
Is it three?
Yep, three.
Excellent, excellent. That would be terrific, I appreciate that, my residents, thank you for that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Spurk. I reside at 2008 Golf View Drive in Tarpon Springs. I also work for the Chamber of Commerce part-time. I want to commend the police department and all the city departments that are working on this, but we need to realize that these businesses are using a great deal of our resources that can be used in other, for other purposes. I don't know about the Sun Bay Motel, I don't really believe in a park, I think maybe that whole area there would be good for mixed use. I see that the downtown area, the commercial district is increasing, it's going to grow and we will need more retail and maybe that would be a good idea there. As far as the Tarpon Inn goes, I believe it's a conforming property, it's in a historic district, it's mid-century modern architecture, which is very in vogue today. And the one thing that I can tell you from working at the Chamber is, we need lodging in town. We need lodging bad in town. Everyone has to go to 19 to be able to get lodging. There is no better place than where the Tarpon Inn is. If, I'm sure you all have looked at the background and seen when it was the Gondola Motel, it could be the jewel of Tarpon Springs. Where I Where I come from, we have MIMO in Miami, and we've restored all the mid-century motels there. They've become boutique hotels, and they attract very high-end visitor. I think Tarpon Tavern is, Tarpon Tavern, Tarpon Inn is the perfect place for this boutique motel. I think that we have to change, it, it needs to be totally restored, but it has to not become a resident motel. It needs to become a motel for travelers. But thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore. I'm glad we're here tonight because you know, three years prior, I've been coming, complaining about the activities of the motel. And finally, we had a meeting, and you're doing something. My question is this, if you've had a homicide there, and you know of the drug activity and the prostitution going on there, and all the problems, can you not take that property by condemnation for the safety, welfare, and health of the community? Can anybody answer? You took my property by condemnation for a parking lot that's used for a business and activities off the trail. Can't you take that property by condemnation? You've got enough evidence that it is a detriment to the community. Nobody can answer? Mr. City Attorney?
Attorney.
This is not a questions and answers, ma'am.
But it's a statement, sir, and it's a statement that we need to know before you, the city goes to buy it. Can you not take it by condemnation because of the crime and everything going on there? Well, we can't get an answer out of them. The second thing is, I go to work very early in the morning. The prostitution is still around there, and I don't want to see an epiphany come again where at night, before the day of epiphany, they're out there trying to get the visitors in. Something we have to look at. In the morning, I see what's coming around up the street between the Tagorelli House and the motel, and I see what's at the corner, and also the corner of Tarpon and Pinellas when I turn left to go down to hit Otter Nineteen to get to work. That's another big problem from that. But for some reason, you don't want to talk about condemnation, and I think we need to look at that before we start paying money. And you take condemnation, you can use it for community use with good properties too. So, thank you for not answering.
Thank you.
My name's Jacob Carr. My address is 146 Cleveland Place, Tarpon Springs. I was at the community meeting, I guess it was about a month ago, and shared some thoughts during that meeting. We had a lot of passionate residents at that meeting also, shared a lot of great ideas, I believe. I want to thank the police chief in sharing an update, what's going on. It's encouraging to hear what's happening in our city. I guess one of the frustrations that I would have as a resident, as a lifetime resident here in Tarpon is that it's just the police chief, it seems like, that's moving forward with this information. I would expect more out of our city manager and city commission right now with additional ideas that were proposed during that meeting. We need to do something about this. I've grown up across the street from these properties for over, I think I lived there for over twenty years with my parents. They still live there. We're in a historic area. It's a beautiful area where people walk around the bayous all the time. So, I was thinking about all the things that go on in the area. We're looking at, Epiphany celebration has been brought up. We have a Christmas parade for the kids that are, run right in between these two hotels. Homecoming and prom pictures, that area is flooded with high schoolers during those times. We have weddings, we have exercise classes, and then we have family events that are out there in that area. These are all people that are endangering their lives by just being out in the public area because the city of Tarpon hasn't moved forward with protecting them. There's more to this other than just having the police department go through and make additional arrests. We need to really look at, are we able to find these locations and business owners for the abuse that they're putting on our emergency services? So, we have the amount of times that the police department are called out there. Something that I brought up is, is there a ability to put a special bed tax in for hotels in this area? Like, do a carve-out to really tax these hotels so only the affluent would be able to live there, or stay there a night? That you couldn't have someone come in that's a drug dealer, or prostitution, or some other aspect, to come in and stay for sixty dollars a night, or whatever they charge? Another question I had was, can you carve out this area in the special area plan and then have another special tax again, and put the pressure on these business owners to really step up to the game and produce a product that we expect in Tarpon Springs for our visitors and residents that live here? When we have friends that come visit, where are they going to stay? They're going to stay at the bed and breakfast, but there's how many rooms are there? They're going to stay at Anderson Brook, that's a nice spot, but we're sending them out of town. Those are concerns that I have as a resident living here my whole life, and I want people to spend their money inside our city. Down downtown area, the sponge docks, the restaurants, those are very important aspects. There's been some safety aspects. I know, Mr. Tara Pannie, you helped with the installation of the lights around the bayou, which was encouraging for safety aspects because I know people exercise through that area throughout the night. There's other safety aspects that have been ignored throughout the bayous also. There's no crosswalks anywhere. The Army Corps of Engineers came in without the city commission approval and installed granite boulders throughout, from the Craig Park boat ramp to the MLK Bridge around Wickham Bayou, and there's no sidewalks over there for our pedestrians, for people that are exercising. If you're an individual that were running or biking in that road, if two cars would come by, you would be forced into those rocks. At that point, you could break a leg or something along those lines. So, there's issues around the bayou of safety concern in multiple areas. I'm encouraging to hear that Mr. Banther is, had the additional item put on the commission ballot, or I'm sorry, commission agenda in December. And I'm really looking forward to, from the city, to hear what steps are being taken from the city, not just from the police department as a whole. Like I said, my name's Jacob Carr, a resident of Tarpon Springs for over thirty years. I'm going to take this time to just go ahead and announce my candidacy for Commissioner, seat one, on the election in March, and I'm looking forward to running. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We mentioned transparency earlier, and listening to this meeting, I feel like there needs to be more. To hear Vice Mayor Tara Pannie quote a letter that was sent, I believe, to one of the hotel owners, is that to Sun Bay?
Correct.
Letter sent by who?
The Development Services Director.
That is public records. Why was that not in the backup? I think the backup was great.
We just received that.
Well, then, we need to make sure we get that information out. It may have been the same letter, I guess, Commissioner Slattery referenced, so the public has some idea more about options. Secondly, this is a presentation, and I think part of the presentation, one of the issues I had at the last meeting, was that there were specific questions that could be addressed by the city attorney, and we hear nothing from the city attorney, whether about eminent domain, or as Ms., former mayor, Ms. Protus mentioned, condemnation. I was expecting to hear more at the last meeting, but not to hear anything tonight from the attorney, where he's had over a month to prepare some information to provide to us, the citizens, what legal action we currently have to take, available to take now, not just the police action. And also, if you've got all these code things, and they, twenty-two you could list, and you have more, that could have been provided in the backup previously. You may have gotten a letter, but the code violations were public record prior to tonight. But I'm a little disappointed in the presentation that we're not getting what information the city can take now legally. We know code enforcement-wise, we know police-wise, we know building-wise. We don't hear nothing attorney-wise.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Any other comments? Well, thank you.
I have something as well, Mayor.
Commission best, yeah.
Um, I, 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 though, I, though, I, I do want to thank all that spoke tonight. I don't, especially for those that, that live near this, this, this problem, I don't underestimate your feelings and your passion for getting this, for getting this, this, this done quickly. And I know sometimes, looking at city government, or any government, you can say, well, it's living on a snail's pace, or it's just being stamped along. And I can assure you, at least from my perspective, that we are taking very proactive solutions for this problem. We're not, we're not, we're not simply having the police chief speak and, and say, well, we're going to do more crime watch, more officers, and exhaust those resources. But I think having our city manager have a direct conversation for purchasing one of, one of those buildings with the, with these CRA funds is a huge first step, and not something that could happen overnight. And I would much rather us, if we can, purchase that property outright than have to go through a, a, a legal battle. I'm not saying that we're not prepared to do that, but obviously, at first, you, you want, you want, you want to avoid that. So, I can appreciate the passion. I ask that the residents that spoke tonight, please stay involved, hold us accountable, and, you know, obviously, make sure you're at, you're at that December sixth meeting here, because I think you're going to hear more about, about the solutions that you want to hear, because we'll have information for which we can make a decision. Right now, we, we don't have that information. I'm not sure this is best, best, best for the mayor or Mark. Can the city attorney address the question about condemnation? I know he's already talked about eminent domain before, but...
After we get all those questions, we're going to have some comments made on that as well. Thank you very much. Do you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, in regard to, I understand that public comments is not necessarily a question and answer, but I think the former mayor's paid her due, so I think she deserves a response.
Well, what I'm waiting is to hear all the comments, all the questions, so we can answer that all at once, and appreciate that. Yes?
Well, I, I have the same feeling. I know that the citizens are here and are concerned and are worried, and we have been doing things to move forward. Again, if the Sun Bay is purchased, we still have problems to take care of in that area. But I would also like to know if the city attorney can answer Ms. Protus's question.
At the beginning of the comments, I said, my comments were that we must resolve this, this problem that we have there. One of the problems we have to do to resolve that, excuse me, sir, you already spoke. It's my turn. One way to resolve this problem is to convert these places to public, to public use. This is what I said earlier, and that's what I meant. This is what we're going to be working, trying to get done. It's many options that we have. The former mayor, Protus, had a question, and the city attorney is going to answer that, and I'm hoping that he answered it to a point that he will not be penalizes us if we have any legal actions. But that's something that we'll have to work on, you know, for, for the, for the, for the future. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the question was posed at the public meeting and tonight, whether these properties could be taken by eminent domain for purposes of a, of a park. And there is a statute directly on point, and it's statute seventy-three point zero-one-four. This statute was, was a reaction to a United States Supreme Court case back in the early two thousands concerning eminent domain. And the statute, you know, I didn't write it. It couldn't be clearer, though. As you know, eminent domain must be exercised for a public purpose, and the abatement of a public purpose, oh, I'm sorry, the abatement of a public nuisance has explicitly been held by the Florida Legislature not to constitute a public purpose in the eminent domain arena. And what the statute says is that abating or eliminating a public nuisance is not a valid public purpose or use for which private property may be taken by eminent domain and does not satisfy the public purpose requirement of the Florida Constitution. There's been no case law generated under that statute. I, I would be, I'm guessing, but it's, it's an educated guess that the reason that no case law has, has been generated under that statute is because it is written in as plain a term as you can possibly imagine. There was a case, a similar case that arose in two thousand and five before the enactment of the statute in two thousand and six. The case didn't reach the appellate court until two thousand and eight, and the appellate court said, had this statute been in place at the time of this taking, at the time of this eminent domain proceeding, we would not be sitting here today because this taking, which was done to abate a public nuisance, would not have been authorized by statute. So, the answer, excuse me, the brief answer as to whether this type of property can be taken in an eminent domain proceeding is no, and it's a, it's a, it's a clear no. I, I know that does not satisfy folks, but that is what the statute says.
Thank you. Of course, that's not going to stop us negotiating for buying this property, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the, I consider, agenda. Item number five is the attorney fees. Six, special events, Christmas parade, December tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Seven is the award file, number seventeen zero-zero-two-five dash and dash RS, enterprise license agreement for GIS software. Number eight is an award file, number seventeen zero-zero-two-eight dash and dash RS, miscellaneous service from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department. And number nine is the approved name change for Southern Analytical Laboratories Incorporated, file number one-four-zero-zero-nine-eight dash B dash RS, to Pace Analytical Services. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? Are there any public comments on this item? You're known, any commission comments? I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Pannie?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item number ten. This is the ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash fourteen. The application sixteen dash seventy-seven to vacate the right-of-way on the Ring Avenue and Gross Avenue parking lot. The city attorney will read the title, and it will explain the quasi-traditional process.
Ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning right-of-way for six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet of an unnamed right-of-way between South Ring Avenue and South Gross Avenue, within block forty-B of APK Safford subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash fourteen. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September twenty-three and October fourteen, two thousand and sixteen. This proceeding is quasi-traditional. We did have a full quasi-traditional hearing at the, at the first reading on October eighteenth. And so, for that reason, I would ask that anyone who intends to testify tonight to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, in that regard, I would ask you to simply update the commission as to any changed conditions or circumstances relative to the application.
There have been no changes since the previous hearing, but I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the commission? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in support of the application? Does staff wish to make a closing summary?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. The chair willing to entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, I, I know we've asked this a hundred times, and we've, this project's been continuously evolving, but now with the second reading, Mr. City Manager, the timeframe on this project is, we've already gone out to bid, right?
No, we will be going, now that we get this, we've got this approved, we'll be, we'll be heading out to bid.
Okay, so we'll go out to bid, and then we talked about doing this in the summer, the construction in the summer, is that what we said?
After season.
After, so May, something like that? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Pannie?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis?
Yes, thank you. That concludes the agenda tonight. We go to the staff comments. Police chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
You. City manager?
No comments. I'm sorry.
City attorney?
I jumped the gun there, I apologize. Thought it was my turn.
For the Chris?
Yes. Just wanted to announce that, and we'll be getting more information, too, because this was all breaking today, and we've got a big meeting of city staff tomorrow. We will have to be out of this building for the week of Thanksgiving, which is only, of course, the workdays are only Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We'll be developing satellite offices for each of our divisions. We'll have that information out to the public as soon as possible, where to go for each different department. The reason is the ceiling of this building, because of the condition of the bricks and how much it's going to take to seal, the fumes are just not capable of working here. We tried a weekend, test this weekend to see how it'd be. Again, you know, they have to, they have to use a high-powered ingredient, three coats, because the original stuff they wanted to do just went right through, it's so bad between the bricks. So to get it over with and done, we'll be clearing this building, but we will have all offices of the city established somewhere. So we will get that to you, probably our building and other thing will be across the street, so people can go there. But we'll have a whole plan out for you, we'll get it out to the public. But that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we'll be relocating all over the place, so we can in one shot do this building. We have no performances, some of the weekends coming up, we had Sunday performances, especially this weekend. You know, we don't want to expose any of the public, so we will be doing it during that Thanksgiving weekend. Again, I'll be getting plans, and we'll be getting press releases, so everybody know where to go for the clerk's office, where to go for the city manager's for building permits, for those things, and we'll get that out for those three days of that week, and have it to you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, in regard to that, are we open for a full day of business on Wednesday? Or a half day? Full day? Just, this is just thinking out loud, but if we were to say, okay, we'll only use essential staff for, you know, those couple of days, and we were to let, you know, a number of employees, if we were to not have a number of employees come in who normally work within city halls, is that something that would, we would be able to use as a cost savings? In other words, not pay for that potential day at work? If staff wanted that?
It's something we can look at. We've also said if people want to take vacations that week, usually, we only, we might do some of that also. So we'll look at both those options depending.
If it's, if we're talking about a day, but it can be a cost savings, you know, take it for a free day anyways, I mean, it's something to look at.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk?
A comment?
No, thank you. Okay. Vice Mayor Terrapani?
Thank you. This comment's in regard to the Forbes Lot, we call it. I know that we had a letter of intent from a strong prospect not long ago, but as I sit there and I look at it, I feel that, you know, being in real estate, I feel like we should have a sign on the building, I mean, on the lot, that has Karen Lemon's contact information and says, you know, possible venture, city incentives, you know, at least generates some new calls. I mean, I feel like at this point, it may be a little bit stagnant in terms of the city's desire to do something with there and partner with a qualified person to do something. So if we can put up a four-by-eight sign, I mean, I'm sure the rendering that was generated from the previous person who actually had the option contract, I'm sure if we could use that rendering to go on the sign to show kind of what we envisioned as far as the, you know, the balcony and the facade and the elevation and things like that with Karen's number and inquire within for city incentives. So I think that would be beneficial.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banther?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Seber?
I'd just like to invite everyone to First Friday coming up this weekend, and our first Stone Crab Festival sponsored by The Rotary. It's going to be all-you-can-eat stone crabs at Craig Park from 3 to 7, along with hot dogs and hamburgers and beer and wine and a band. So we invite people to come out. We're selling tickets through the Tarpon Springs Rotary Club, so hope to see some of you out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
I believe this Thursday is Music on the Beat. Is that the last one for the year?
Yes.
So we usually have a bonfire, so if the fire department allows us to. But, so if you can come out and enjoy the weather and our last one of the year, should be a fun time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. If you please take a look at the flyer that's on your desk, and you will see that on the Wednesday, November 9, I will, from 10 o'clock, from 10 to 11 o'clock, at the Recreation Community Center, I will be hosting a meeting to gather information from the seniors, what they like to see for the senior information center here in Tarpon Springs. This is a request that I got from many seniors, they like to see that, and once I gather that information, I will come back with, I will bring it back to the BOC as an agenda item to be discussed. Also, I'd like to inform you that the mayors of our sister cities, Calumnia's and Harki, they will be visiting us for the Epiphany Celebration. They're going to be here for 10 days. And I will be reaching out to the Calumnia Society, to the Harki Society, to help out with their finance, to finance their visit. If anyone that is willing to help out, it will be appreciated by our sister city program. So they're going to, the plan right now is for them to be here on January the 3rd through January the 10th. Also, I'd like to welcome the new businesses in town, the Glass Bottle Art and Tarpon Art Guild. And I want to welcome them to Tarpon Springs. Also, we have one more event, and this is on November 5. We have the Antink and Treasure Sale at the Mother Mears Boulevard, right? Well, that concludes the regular session tonight, and it's adjourned at 8:25. Good night, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Yeah, right.
Hello.